Okay, everybody. Good afternoon. It's 1 o'clock and welcome to this special town board meeting of the Town of Reinbeck. It's February 1st. Would everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The purpose of this meeting is for us to conduct interviews with the five so far candidates who have put their name forward to be considered for an appointment by the Town of Reinbeck Town Board and the Town of Clinton Town Board to fill a legislative seat for the County District 19 that was vacated by legislator Joel Tyner's resignation. We are doing all of this in public. All of our interviews are in public. We know that while appointments of certain people are exempt and can be held in executive session and while case law is scant, we believe that there is no -- people who are trying to be -- or seeking to be appointed to an elected position have no reasonable expectation of privacy. And we are here to be the voice of the voters. We want to get as much information as possible and we want it all to be on public record. So all interviews, discussion, and voting in our joint session on the 6th will be done in public. Additionally, the Town of Reinbeck will accept applications until the close of day on the 4th so that we can meet with candidates before our meeting on the 6th. So I want to thank all of you for coming and participating. Because this is not a joint meeting, the Town of Clinton has not noticed, we have invited the Town of Clinton Board here to participate. We have Supervisor Ray Oberly here, my friend, thank you. We have Councilperson Nancy Cunningham here. And we have Councilperson Elliot Warner. Michael Witten is working and could not be here. And Dean Michaels, the fifth council -- oh, Dean is here! And Councilperson Dean Michaels, so thank you for coming. I will be presiding over this meeting and I will have a series of five or six questions that I will be asking each candidate. And then I will open it up to my town board and then the public, with preference going to the town board members of Clinton. But in any case, I think we have plenty of time for everybody to question the candidates. Is there anything that anyone from the board would like to add? Or any other statements from anybody?
Yes, I need to refuse myself from the interviews because I'm an African. So I'm going to sit in the audience.
Thank you. Would you mind flipping your name tag over? Thank you, Brennan. You know, it's proper. Please come on up. Brad Munich is a member of the Village of Reinbeck. He's a trustee with the Village of Reinbeck. You know, as I said, I have a series of questions that I'm going to ask everyone and then whatever you guys want to do. Hi, Brad, thanks for coming. What is your party affiliation?
I'm a Democrat. I'm a registered Democrat.
With whom would you caucus in the legislature?
Primarily caucus with the minority.
Primarily?
The Democrats.
So you would consider caucusing with the Republicans?
Um, when you say caucus, you mean?
There are caucus rooms at the legislature. Parties caucus, they go into their room and they caucus.
A lot of them caucus with the Republican Party, but I do work across the aisle.
You are a member of the Village Board. Would you resign?
I would want to wait to see if this --
If appointed, would you resign?
I want to wait to see when, if the seat settles. So there would be a race in eight or nine months. And I would probably do both until that --
Your intention is to hold both seats?
It's not set in stone. I mean, I will listen to all sides, but I, from what I understand, you're -- it is not a conflict to do both for a while.
Well, as you know, in New York State progressives take the Reinbeck pledge and only to serve in one elected seat.
I have a lot of important things underway that, you know, I have to consider.
Can you tell us about your government experience?
I've been a volunteer here in Reinbeck for about 10 or 11 years. Primarily, I've been an elected official for almost six full years as a village trustee. I started out on the Finance and Controls Committee. It was an advisory committee here in the town. And I was appointed by Tom Trot about 11 years ago. I conducted and re-wrote the Ethics Code. And then maybe a year later, I ran for office on the village. A year after that, I did get elected on the village board. One of the first things I did was rewrite, along with my committee members, because I created Finance and Controls Committee in the village, was conducted a rewrite of the Ethics Code over there and the Procurement Code and started a five-year campaign for wastewater facility, I believe. I was the lead as on the wastewater facility. I completed every item on that with the -- working with the chief wastewater operator, including a happily about a local works project to replace a screw press at the wastewater facility. That's how I got started. I've been on other boards, working groups, all sorts of stuff. I've been on the Ethics Board here twice.
What is your understanding of this job?
My understanding of the job is you're a county legislator. You know, you're -- it's all about oversight, oversight, oversight. And it's also about creating the laws. You know, you're in the legislative branch. My code writing experience, my experience as a lawyer lends itself to that. And as far as oversight, you know, we need a good balance on the county board. And some of my areas are property tax relief, some of the areas of interest, some of the areas -- in between my terms as a village board member, I was a volunteer. I worked on two bills. One for IDA, Industrial Development Agency Reform, and one for 501(c)(3) reforms for dwellings created in 501(c)(3) context as incentive for employees. So IDA reform, I'd want to look at the ethics and procurement codes. And I think that procurement in particular is, a lot of it is mandated by state law. However, you know, evaluate the processes, make sure there's a firewall between those who get campaign contributions and those who make these procurement decisions. That's an area I have some experience with because I have experience with our own code inspectors. I want to make sure the funding is there for, for the vulnerable folks, you know, elderly, services. And I think a $200 million prison is a failure of imagination. However, if that ship has sailed and that project is underway, what's even worse is allowing people to go to waste and putting nonviolent people that don't threaten society in prison. And there are a lot of incarceration forms all over the country. There's so many of them, you could almost bottle it. And I know the county's taken some efforts on this, but as part of my oversight authority, I would want to make sure that that is really being conducted in a way that we're not putting people in prison for missing bonds or for bench warrants, you know, missing hearings and things like that.
But isn't that dictated by the state?
Well, there are some prosecutorial discretionary areas and law enforcement agent discretionary metrics that can take -- I mean, we're funding these agencies. We're funding the sheriff, we're funding the district attorney's office. So I would want to see where their great ideas are because this stuff is happening all over the place. So that's one area of interest. And, you know, I want to make sure that the civil rights division is adequately funded. So it's oversight, oversight. One of the keys to my success in doing quite a lot of things for the Village Board is I don't, I'm not a full vessel all at once. I mean, I've got all these ideas, we all do, right? Because we're all well-informed citizens for the most part. But I don't try to tackle like 18 issues at a time. You know, you do two or three things that you work on at a time over a two-year period. And that's, to me, been a secret and a veteran success. So that's how I would approach it. The other thing is, you know, you're the code writers. You're the legislative branch, you create the laws. And I'm a lawyer and I'm a business person and I have good reading skills. And so that's a strength that I'm just going to bring to the table as a legislator.
Why do you want this position?
I've wanted this position for a while. I think it's a next step that's going to broaden my public service. You know, I'm going to be seven years on the board and that's a lot. So, yeah, I'm looking for, you know, to spread my wings a little bit.
And what do you do for a living?
I'm a landlord. You know, I had some small investments in Chicago. I sold these properties, came out here about 14 years ago and this is what I've been doing since I've been here.
Where's your property?
In Ulster County in Hyde Park.
Does anybody on the town board have any questions for Brad?
I just have a couple. You've heard a lot of these comments, so I just have to know. What aspects of your background make you qualified for this job? Have you thought about being a legislator before the vacancy was available?
I did and I know how important the position was to the previous person and didn't really want to try to wrest that from that person. So I had. But it's an opportunity now, so. As far as, what was the other part of your questions?
Background.
Background? I mean, I think I was a businessman first, you know, coming out of college. And I'd always, I used to be very entrepreneurial and open for these ideas. Now I actually have these kind of ideas for government. But, so I know, you know, public works, I know budgets, I know, and I'm a big picture person, so I can see how all this blends together. And, I mean, I think that's been the secret to what success I've had on the report in accomplishing quite a few things.
Have you spoken to anybody in the legislature about this position or about what's going on?
Not yet, because I've looked on the internet, you know, for some of the things that they've been working on, but not yet.
What do you think the biggest issues facing the legislature are?
Oversight, you know, again.
But you'd be part of a Democratic minority.
Right. But well-reasoned presentations, you know, and presented in a way that's not trill, they're tough to ignore. You know, letters to the editor, I can write well, you know, and I'll be part of that caucus, so you can't be ignored when you're in another rational. So that's what I would attempt.
Thank you. Fred, Dean, Nancy, Elliot, do you have any questions?
Ray Oberly, Supervisor of Clinton.
Let me see if I can hand you a microphone.
It's under the -- oh, no, it's not. It looked like it was. Ray.
I think you got it.
Ray Oberly, Supervisor of Clinton. The question I have is, there are two towns that you would represent at the legislative level. The question is, they're different in structure and economy and makeup. We're more rural, this is more developed. I'm not saying it's fully developed, but the bulk of it is developed. There are a lot of vacant lands, just like we have. What efforts have you taken to understand? I'm sure you know a lot about Reinbeck, but what do you know by Clinton?
Well, what I know about Clinton is the composition of Clinton in that you're probably, you know, suffering from high property taxes because you don't have a commercial base to buoy your tax base. You have four different school districts, you know, so. Again, I would be higher up in the chain to fight against unfunded mandates. I mean, I really, I think this has been pointed out that 70% of the county budget is from unfunded mandates from the state. So, I mean, that's one area, you know, property taxes. If there's anything I could do for, you know, historic protection, environmental protection, or, you know, prevent McMansions development, you know, I have, you know, I will read your comprehensive plan, the town's master plan, but I haven't had a chance to do it yet. So what I wouldn't do is foist my opinion on what's best for Clinton.
The unfortunate thing is, you were saying mega mansions and stuff like that, that's the local cliff and zoning law that applies to that. So from a county level, you would not have jurisdiction over that?
No, but you do have, I mean, you have some -- in New York, the county planning department does have almost like advisory oversight over town zoning codes and things like that. Whatever I, yeah, whatever I could do. I mean, I kind of know how the interplay is, but whatever I could do for you guys. And I would spend a lot of time campaigning. This would be a shoe leather campaign, you know, for reelection. And that's what I've done. I reach out to every house in the village when I run. Done that three times and then another shoe leather campaign. So a lot of shoe leather work in Clinton, talking to all of you folks and getting an idea what your master plan is.
Yeah, as I say, operationally, we're like two different communities. And you've got to understand that aspect.
You're closer to the town, you know. I mean, we have the rural, or the village density, which is sort of modeled after small cities. You know, we don't have a highway department and a street department. You know, a lot of these inefficiency grants. I mean, if you have, you know, efficiencies that need to be examined and there's any kind of sway I could have with, you know, grants, you know, for exploring options of regional governmental functions, you know, in the town of Clinton, I can help with that.
That's pretty limited in general because they're handled by a separate committee composed of a variety of people, some from the legislature, some from supervisors, some from public, that actually award these grants.
Right, we did, we had good luck with that here. We just got a grant for core consolidation, for a look at the highways. We've got a grant for the wastewater water facility to just look at whether it's, if it makes sense, turn that over to the Duchess County Water and Wastewater.
That's all I have. Who's next?
Nancy, Elliot, Dean?
I guess I'll say something.
Well, can I say? Go ahead.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, there's a little farmhouse, one and a half story farmhouse on Fiddles Bridge. And I came up, I always used to ride my bicycle over there because that's part of my bike route. It'd go, well, it used to be when I had more time. And I would always knock on the door because I took a picture of that one and a half story farmhouse and that's the model for our police station in the village. So because that, I mean, we're different, but that architectural character plugged right into the center street perfectly. You know, we spent a lot of time trying to think of some design ideas and that was it. When I saw that, I took a picture of it and that's the long story.
So build it.
Build it.
Okay, Nancy Cunningham. I guess the thing I'd like you to just talk about for a minute is, obviously being in the community and being involved in politics, you've had some exposure into the legislature. And I'm just wondering, if you were to be placed in the legislature, what would be your priorities other than what you've already stated?
Well, you know, I don't know if I can add, you know, the ethics and procurement. I mean, it creates a lot of trust, you know, people when you evaluate and make sure it's a good plan. But any kind of code rewrites, you know, I mean, I can help with.
Environmentally, where would you?
Environmentally, yeah. I mean, I, you know, as a member for the Hudson Seven, which is the source water protection group around here. But then the mayor, the mayor and I were both on it, so he sort of transitioned into it. But, you know, we argued for protection against the barges and we're, we just signed a source water grant request for the seven communities that are on. We had this discussion, I did go to a few Democratic committee meetings in Clinton and we were talking about the barges system a few years ago, but.
Do you have any?
So, you know, with the recent budget discussion that the state has and the cut in local funding from the state, what's your thoughts as far as in the county level, the sales tax distribution?
This has been a bone of contention for us because we're such a big generator of sales tax revenue in the Village of Reinbeck itself. We have single taxpayers that pay more in sales tax than our total take in the entire board. So I'd rather suspect that that money is, there's a lot of money that's being split with the county and with the state that we're not getting to. So I believe that local communities should get more of a share of a slice of pie, including Clinton. We lost the aid funding, which is aid to municipalities and UTA too, probably. And, you know, I do want that money to go to the small cities. However, I don't know why they took it away from us. So one, if I get one notch higher than I am, I'll have more of a, not a bully pulpit, but at least more of a pulpit that I have now to voice concerns about unfair taxation, you know. The state takes such a paternalistic approach to municipalities and they talk about efficiencies in government, but it's almost like they want, it's almost like a red herring so we're not talking about the unfunded mandates. You know, the unfunded mandates are crippling all of us, you know. Once you get, I've been in residential real estate for, you know, 31 years or so. And once you get over 2% of property taxes, you're starting to take equity away from people's homes. And we need people to fight for home liquidity. You know, a home should be more of a liquid asset. You shouldn't be crippled by property taxes, you know. These are things that should move to the state government. The state government has a graduated income tax, which is what every, what I believe is good for everybody. And property taxes are regressive, so we shouldn't soak in some property taxes. You know, as a county legislative person, there's not, I don't have that much sway with it, but I'll have a bigger voice than I have now.
Elliot, Dean? Anybody from, I just want to say that as a devoted local governance person, our property taxes are a fraction, you know, school taxes that make it unaffordable. So I agree, the state needs to look at a different model of funding school taxes. But that's above my pay grade.
Oh, and by the way, the aid money is not gone yet, but it's proposed to be, it's proposed to be taken.
We're not done with that site, right, Ray?
It's early December.
We're all, we're not done with that site. Anybody from the public want to? And Brad, I wanted to say thank you to all the candidates. I know that this is a bit of a hotspot, being interviewed like this, but this is best for the process.
I appreciate the invite.
Anybody from the audience or public have any questions or comments? David, come on up.
All right, a great way to know the community is just the shoe leather, as you pointed out. One way to get to know the broader community outside of Reinbeck is to work on campaigns outside of Reinbeck. To what extent and how often would you knock on doors outside of Reinbeck prior election, regardless of who it might have been for?
Many times, you know. It's hard for me not to say who it was. I've been, I campaigned in Rogers, campaigned at the train station in Poughkeepsie, train station in Reincliffe, several times in Hyde Park for candidates. So I've been on volunteer initiatives in Southern Ulster, which involve an Orange County IDA. That wasn't campaigning, but it was definitely getting to know that community's needs. So that's about it. Repeatedly, but, you know, I also have family and I have my village board applications and my outside business, so a lot of hats to wear.
What is your property consisted in Hyde Park? You're a property owner that generates your income in the county?
I have a small manufactured home, mobile home park. And I have a community water supply there, so I'm treated almost the same way as, you know, the water department here, so it's some of the same regulations.
Where is it, Brad?
It's in, it's by the fire training center.
By the EMS or fire training? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Please, come on up.
Not directly relevant. You have a law degree from John Ross.
Yes.
But you haven't practiced law in business?
No, I didn't. I haven't gotten a license in New York because I am not working in law in New York. But I keep my license active, just in case, you know.
Do you have a specialty?
Commercial real estate leases. That was my background. But that's also reading and codes are a lot like that, you know. I'm a lease nerd, but I'm also a statute nerd.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Brad Munich, thank you. Our next person is scheduled at 11:30. It's publicly announced that we will be at one, so I think we can take a five-minute break until the next person is here. I'd like to motion for a five-minute break. Thank you. All in favor? We'll be back. Our next candidate here, I saw him walk in. Here he is. We're back in, everybody. Steve, are we back in? Thank you. Again, this is the February 1st special town board meeting. Open meeting, interviews that the Town of Reinbeck is conducting along with members of the audience. We have four out of five Clinton Town Board members here and brisk public participation. Our next candidate is John Rossi. Johnny, come on up. Again, I want to thank you. I know this is difficult, being interviewed in public, but we have a chair for you right over there. We believe that there's no expectation of privacy from public officials, so. Thanks, John, thanks for coming. I have a series of questions that I'm asking all candidates, just for continuity's sake. What is your party affiliation?
Democrat.
Have you been a Democrat your whole life?
No, I have not. Was originally Republican. Ran on the Democratic ticket in 2007, actually for county legislator in Asker County. And sub-surprisingly decided to become independent, who have really no party affiliation. And as the base evolved, the larger political arena in 2016, I felt very compelled to make a commitment to the Democratic Party and have been a registered Democrat since that time.
You're aware that there are caucuses in the county legislature? With whom would you caucus?
Well, the Democrats. I'm a registered Democrat.
I'm asking this because, you know, the public elects people and I believe the public have a right to know about party affiliation and expectations. Will you run for election in November?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
And will you, would you resign as village trustee if you were appointed?
Oh, yes.
You would?
Of course.
Okay. You know that you don't have to. The law allows village trustees and mayors to serve, not town board members. But you would reserve, you would?
From a practical standpoint. And campaigning, it's okay if I just speak?
Yes, you take all the time you want.
Okay. Campaigning is a full-time job as well, so I continue to have a full-time job. All due case is still at college, so I'm going to be working for a little bit longer, a lot longer. From a practical standpoint, I could not imagine being able to juggle both positions and the election, whoever is appointed to this position, in my mind, the appointment is as planned for February 6th, I would say that whoever gets appointed starts working on their campaign. February the 6th, I would say that whoever gets appointed starts working on their campaign that afternoon for.
Or at least their job, yeah.
I appreciate both, yes.
Thank you. Tell us about your government experience.
Sure. So, starting in 2004 through, really, right now today, I've had a pretty extended and continuous term in public service. So I've run since 2004 in five campaigns, and I've been elected four times. From 2004 to 2010, I was twice elected to the Board of Education in the South Shore Town or Community of North America. In 2007, as I mentioned, I ran for county legislator and did pretty badly, actually. Yeah, I guess I shouldn't say that since I'm probably for a county legislator position, but ran for this job in District 13 in Nassau County, which had a constituency of about 55,000 people. We thought we ran a great campaign, was up against a very strong and very respected and very liked, even, you know, by myself, member of the Republican Party. She was there for a long time. We got 3,500 votes. That's pretty good, but my competitor got 6,500, so that was a lot better. So I didn't mention in my resume and cover letter, you know, when you ever wanted them, did you learn from every one of these? In 2012, and I left the school board in 2010, I promised my wife this is it, I'm not going to run for any more public office. In 2012, Hurricane Superstorm Sandy happened, and we happened to have a small studio condominium in a 184-unit condominium on the South Shore from Island that could run into like the Long Beach Rockaway area, Lido Beach. It's a 184-unit condominium. It was wiped out, and it was a really interesting, or not interesting, but it was quite a moment because everyone in the condominium said, "By the way, who's in charge here?" And the answer was a slate of elected officials that really were not up for the management of this reconstruction. Ultimately, a new slate of candidates were voted in. I was one of those five candidates. By the way, that's where I really did learn about grants and pursuing funds. Too long of a story to tell, but I was very successful in securing grants through FEMA, New York Horizon, and then the after was a valuable experience. I left in 2014, 2015. We relocated here to the Hudson Valley, and I had the opportunity to, and the privilege to be appointed by Mayor Bassett in 2017, and then ran for that position, of course, in 2018. So about a 15-year stretch of public service, school board, condominium association, and of course, the municipality of the village. He said, "Which is the most difficult?" The condominium association.
What do you do for a living?
So for the past 25 years, my background of education is in telecommunications. Out of college, I started working in the phone company because my parents said, "Go work for the phone company, it's a good job." I went back, I got my masters, which the company paid for, and then I developed coverage to go out into business for myself. So since 1992, I've had a small S-chapter corporation. Sometimes I had a lot of employees, which meant a lot of headaches, but now it's just myself and specifically supervisor. What I do is I provide a service where I secure technology funding, technology-related grants for schools and libraries, although the Rhinebeck School District is top one of my customers, or the Star Library, the Red Hook Library is one of my customers. This is also a service that I can provide and do for healthcare providers. There's a, for instance, a rural healthcare fund, and I pursue funds related to technology for these firms. So we're pretty much largely out of my home, and my largest clients are still down in the downstate area, the Brooklyn Diocese is my single largest client, and that's what I continue to do.
I'm sorry, what's your single name's called?
The Diocese of Brooklyn.
What's your understanding of this job, the job of county legislator?
Well, I know that the legislators, basically, you have, I guess, you know, three or four major functions, obviously levy taxes, apportion or make appropriations, obviously manage the budget or, you know, adopt the budget, adopt legislation. So I do have a sense of it. I don't think that just county legislator is that different from the position that I ran for, you know, on the other end, which was also a legislator.
Have you spoken to anyone in the legislature? Have you done, what research have you done to prepare yourself for this?
So, since Monday. Well, to some extent, I would say I have prepared for this position for a long time in terms of whether directly or indirectly or purposely or not, through the use of public service, because there's a lot, needless to say, a lot of commonality, regardless if it's a school board or condominium association or the village. To answer the question more specifically, I obviously went to the legislative website, I looked up the different committees, I know there's about 21, 22 different citizens committees, wanted to see where there might be vacancies. I wanted to see if Legislative Tyner was on any of those committees. I looked at some of the standing committees. I read the mission statement of Chairman Volker, and I must say I was very impressed by it. I read the minutes from the most coveted meeting, which was the January meeting, which is about 61 pages, a little high, but it's just legal details and protocols, but there was the greater, the full, complete statement from Chairman Volker, of course, of the 25 legislators, I guess the chair. Clearly a gentleman that's a party agnostic, and what it sounds to me like, I don't know who Chairman Volker is, but all I can say is that I found his words very inspiring. I like the idea of, look, let's put it this acrimony, and Republican, Democrat aside, let's just all work together for the people.
Yeah, he's a very decent guy.
I don't know, but I liked that he has something therapy to do with, and he brought to Pine Plains Library. It's a really likable guy.
He's a farmer in Pine Plains.
Yes, yeah. Learned that they were, the old legislators at one time were farmers, and he's the only one that continues to characterize himself as a farmer legislator.
Well, that's a lot of research since Monday, so.
No, that was just a morning.
And I asked you if you've run, yeah, I did ask you if you, did I ask you if you want to run for election for this?
Oh, very good, yes.
And why do you want the position?
What I, and I hope this doesn't sound overly humble, what I want is the best person in this position. And supervisor, if I'm the best person, then I want the position. But if there's someone better than John Rossi, I want that person to have the position. But I think I have a lot of unique qualifications. I think that there's a lot of things about my resume that hopefully everyone's had a chance to see, suggest, or I think do encourage me to be considered for the position. So I do want the best person, anybody the best person to forward to it.
What would you do for Rhinebeck?
Well, Rhinebeck and Clinton would be.
I'm going to let Ray ask you.
I would hope that I would be able to continue doing the things that I'm doing right now, supervisor, and I think what I've been able to contribute uniquely to the village of Rhinebeck is the pursuit of grants, federal, state, local grants, lots of state grants. And I would like to be able to continue to do that. I'd like to be able to expand upon that. I think that when you file for grants, I won't get into the detail, but you're concentrating emails on different types of grants, and it's remarkable, the number of grants that are available to municipalities, but some of them are, some of them would now be available in the county capacity.
Are you saying, as a county legislator, you would help us write grants?
Well, I don't know if I would be the person that would actually call the slate and do that, because that just would be too much, but I would absolutely want to be able to, I think there's no person that the town, as we found with the village, can be doing much more with grants. I mean, my goodness, just the, you have the governor's red economic development council grants, that's three quarters of a million dollars, three quarters of a million dollars every single year. That's, and we applied for the first time, but we didn't succeed, but we did try, and we'll try again.
Yeah, we get several hundred thousand dollars a year grants we're active. It's part of the new model of government. You just have to close the. Ray, Nancy, Dean, Mike, please grab the microphone. It's Ray Overly, the supervisor of Clinton, my friend.
You could push that out.
Yeah. I'll put it out front.
Okay, so she said I'm Ray Overly. The problem that I had is, you've seen the conflict, you know where we exist?
Yes. Can you name Shortsville?
For once, I just want to be sharing, because maybe just isolated up here, but we're too different.
Ouch, Ray. We share highly of course.
But, you know, we're a different kind of a community geographically, okay? We're very rural, with a few little hamlets scattered around. Here you have a big area called Village and adjoining subdivisions and stuff, so it's a more populated area. So our needs are not necessarily very similar. We don't have community water, we don't have community sewer, you know, all of those things all disappear, so we're different in that respect. And I'm happy, because I don't want to get involved, and there's a lot of mess, paperwork and everything else. So that's okay, but we still have different needs to have things done, and, you know, we like to have our fair share of representation of the issues that face our community be represented, and they may be at odds with Rhinebeck, not that I think they are, but they may be on occasion at odds. And how would you handle that?
Well, Supervisor, I'd like to thank you and your members that are here today. Thanks for being here. I also did some research, so I recognize you from your picture on the website, we haven't met. You're a good looking man. But, and I also did additional research, I, the town of Rhinebeck is a rural community. I think it's about 200 people per square mile, and Clinton is about 110 per square mile. By the way, you know, Poughkeepsie is about 3,000 per square mile, and where my wife and I came from, the town of North Merrick, the community of North Merrick, 6,000 per square mile. So I'm familiar with really dense areas, and I'm getting familiar with the more rural areas. Supervisor, I think, and I'm going to presume this is an issue because of the limited background that I have in working with rural healthcare providers, that broadband is probably something that your community, your constituents would really like. And if all rural broadband issues, American Fund, CAF, I think these are items that Legislative Tyner was pursuing and looking into, and I really want to spend time, if I'm so fortunate to be given this position, working with Clinton on rural broadband solutions for your community. But more than, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
More than anything else, what I would want to be doing is doing what we're doing right now. I want to know more about the community. I need to know more about the town of Rhinebeck. I live in the village. I'm a village trustee. I've got to know the village really well. But the only way I would know more about your community and supervisor, your constituents, is to spend time with you.
Yeah, just as you mentioned broadband, we have cable vision as our, that's our company, okay? We have a contract with them and all. So our issue is fighting them to get the cable to where there are fewer houses than they want it to be. You've got to dial to five houses per mile. We occasioned places where it's two houses per mile, you know, such a more rural, big open field and stuff. So it's an interesting issue. I was up here when they had the meeting on community-sponsored broadband. I can't see how that would afford our residents a reduction in the cost of the service, even though it sounds good on paper. I think when you look at the whole thing, and it was not a real financial analysis of it, but all you're talking about is putting wires up is the community thing. You're still contracting out to some other provider to provide the transmission from, we'll say CBS channel in New York City into the wire. You've got to pay somebody to do that, but when you start talking to that cost and adding in the cost of putting all new wires, because cable vision is not going to share wires, right? This is turf war. So, you know, it sounds good, but it's a hard issue to fight as such.
Supervisor, and I want to overdraw the point, but I do want you to know that the work that I do, Supervisor Spencey was asking me about my own business, it's a program that's very specific to the SEC, and there are funds, known as the High Boys Fund, that I'm curious about. Those are the funds that are specific to the service providers, the cable providers you're talking about, to help them subsidize their costs. So is there, Supervisor, is there a conversation we should have no matter what happens here?
Yeah, it may work out, but I'm just saying, just looking at it in a one-hour presentation, I was encouraged, it didn't seem like it made sense.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Nancy, or Elliot, or Dean, do you have any questions or comments? Oh, I'm sorry. How about my town board?
Short questions, John. What do you hope to accomplish if you get elected? What would you like to get done?
Well, I'd like to be part of the team, the 25 legislators, and be able to address, and of course, be representative of Clinton and Rhinebeck towns and their entities. Beyond that, I'd like to be able to be a greater assistance to the needs of the county. There was a reason that I purposely mentioned about coming from an area originally that's still relatively populated. It makes us, the county is very interesting in that we've got, I was just discussing with Supervisor, 100 people per square mile here, 200 people per square mile, but to get down to Poughkeepsie, you've got a, you have an urban density, and you have urban issues. And as I mentioned, granted, it was a small amount of research that I did earlier today, but as I read through these 61 pages of minutes, I was struck with some of the narrative at the very end of the minutes, Ed, that talked to the issues in Poughkeepsie in terms of shelters. I'd like to be able to, in an easy way I can summarize it, is bear some support in the area of social services, those that are more needy, those that may be going hungry, being cold, being in shelters. If I can make contributions there, and I think I might be uniquely one of the few people, maybe the only person, that has governing experience in a rural community and governing experience in an urban community. I'm sorry for the long answer, but.
Have you always wanted to be a legislator?
Despite that terrible defeat in 2007, yes, I do like to be, yeah. But make no mistake, I enjoy working with the mayor and being part of the team here as well, and working with you folks. Thank you.
John, would you talk a little bit about your experience for the, I guess it was six years on the school board in Nassau County, and what that was like and what you got out of it?
Yes, thank you. The reason that I was motivated to run for the school board, Chancey, was because of a really bad incident that had happened involving hazing in one of the high school football games. And I won't go into the details, and a lot of it is kind of sorted and very unpleasant, but as it turned out, one of the victims of this hazing was the child of, and I do mean a child, I mean a 14-year-old boy prevailed upon by, you know, seniors, a friend of our families. And for that reason, I got compelled, because the only way to really make a change, what I saw was the certainly of the waggons by the administration, and suddenly it became very apparent that to make change... And suddenly it became very apparent that to make change, you'd have to be a member of the board. And that's what motivated me to run for the school board. I ran, by the way, on the idea that I'm a businessman, I've got a technology background, got a pretty good education, I'm good to shake things up. And when I got to the board, I learned very, very quickly that being part of a government, a governing team is very different than anything in business. It really, it was probably a year before I felt like I was a good school board member. The Board of Education is tough. The toughest part is the gravity of the parents. The kids are great, faculty are great, but parents, the board meetings were always, always crowded. I won't say packed, but the monthly meetings and the budget meetings were always very, very well attended, as I suppose they should be, but that was the most challenging part, the parents. Great experience, though. But six years was long enough.
Where are you standing on the jail placement?
I just don't know. I don't, I haven't studied it well enough, and so I'm not in a good position to say. I really don't know.
How about incarceration protocols that we were talking about? Excuse me, with Brandon?
I didn't hear that, but with here.
Okay, I mean, the fact that people get put in jail, they can't come up with bail for nonviolent offenses and so on. I'm not sure how much of that the county legislature has to do with, but it seemed fair of it.
And I agree with you on both fronts. I don't know, again, the brief review that I've done and my own experience, I've done, but I ran for county legislator in Nassau, I didn't see that there was a major role that a legislator could play. But Alan, I certainly do agree with you that there's disparity in this country, in this state, on incarceration. I was just speaking personally, but I.
You were talking about shelters, but there are a number of services, like for seniors, that are being skimped on with the county, you know, talking about building its 200 plus million dollar jail. And we all know it's going to cost more than that because projects like that never come in under budget. And, you know, and a huge fund balance.
Right. And that's something that to legislator Tiny, to his credit, that brought to our attention the village board meetings on a regular basis, that there is this robust fund balance and what are we doing with it? So that's why I'm very interested in continuing to pursue areas of grants, because there's an awful lot of social services related grants, housing related grants, and they aren't the right fit in my role here as a village trustee, but I think they would be. Thank you.
Anybody else, anybody from the public or David, come on up?
I repeat the question for everybody.
Well, you know, why not?
Could you describe for us your experience in campaigns and getting to know areas outside of Rhinebeck? And describe maybe, you know, how often you did that and maybe what you learned from it.
Yes, thank you. So in addition to the five campaigns that I ran for myself, 2004 until last year, 2018, and I just digress for one moment, one of the things I've always been sensitive about, and I tried to put this in my resume and cover letter, I understand that I'm new here. I recognize that I'm a new face and I want to be respectful to people that have been here for a long time and hopefully I always am. But I was delighted that when the election took place in 2018, you go on the new phase and did go on and get votes. In addition to my own campaigns, I have very involved at least this past, this past, I started to say funding cycle, this past cycle, the election cycle, in both the Antonio Delgado campaign and the Karen Spade campaign. And had the opportunity to see a lot going out and literally knocking on doors in support of those candidates. Introduced me to lots of areas throughout Dutchess County. Really, I guess the projects down in Poughkeepsie, which I wasn't really that familiar with. And by the way, that was one of the best places to be knocking on doors and canvassing and talking to people. To some of the really, really rural parts of the area, like in Myland, that I just, you know, also wasn't familiar with, until you get in the car and you drive and you go to these places and knock on doors. You know what, there's worse ways to spend a beautiful whole weekend, you know? I don't know if that answered your question, but thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments or concerns that you'd like John or Nancy to? Is he right here, everybody? John, I want to thank you. This is, you know, you're in the hot seat again. It's hard to be interviewed like this, but, you know, you've done it with good cheer and it's in the interest of what's best for the public.
Thank you, and again, thank you Supervisor and everyone from Clinton. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being here. It's cold out here, but thanks for coming out. Thank you.
I think our next candidate is Kristin?
Kirsten.
Kirsten, Kira Bonanza. Can we call you Kira?
Yeah.
Thanks for coming again. I know this is difficult because of Cameron and public, and this is how it has to be and it should be, so welcome.
Thank you.
I have a series of questions that I'm asking each candidate because this is the appointment of a person to an elected position. I think that we have to sort of act in the best interest of the voters of the constituents. So what is your party affiliation?
I'm a registered Democrat.
Have you been a registered Democrat for your whole life?
No, not at all.
Can you tell us about your?
Absolutely. So when I was 18, I registered as a Green Party person and decided that, well, then no one would expect me to vote one way or the other, so I could do more research and take my time and figure out what I wanted. And then as, as I got older, I noticed that that didn't really allow me to vote in the primaries and that didn't allow me to really feel like I had anyone who was heard. On top of that, the Green Party had its own fractions and split, and I felt like it dispersed the message for me, which was of peace and environmentalism. And, and so I became a Democrat at that point.
When did you become a Democrat?
I'll be honest with you, I don't remember. I knew it was before Obama was elected. I remember, like, it was definitely like prior, maybe the year before, maybe two years before. It was right around then that I felt like, actually, I need to be in this, in this particular position in order to feel heard.
You're aware that the legislature has caucuses, the Democratic Caucus and a Republican Caucus? Which one would you caucus?
I would be in caucus with the Democrats.
What do you do for a living?
I am the executive director of the Rhinebeck Area Chamber of Commerce, and I also do some consulting on the side. I've been a business consultant for the last 10, 11 years, spell of the town.
And do you see any conflict of interest between being the director of the Rhinebeck Area Chamber of Commerce and an elected member of the county legislature?
No, I don't see any conflict. I had a good conversation with our board president as well, and he did neither. I've talked to a couple of different people, actually. A good conversation with the clerk of the county legislature and asked, and no one seems to think it would be an issue.
Tell us about your government experience, and if you don't have any, please tell us about any community or political activism or experience.
Okay. So I don't have any experience specifically with the government. And I think that as far as activism is concerned, I've much more lived my values and my principles than specifically gotten on one campaign or the other. Meaning, when I say one campaign or the other, I'm not talking about political parties. I'm talking about fight for this or fight for that. I've really lived that, like, you know, doing things like carrying reusable bags and helping to disperse them to people who needed them and things like that. So it's, it's an activism, but I think it's different than some people consider it to be. I also, I guess, a couple of years ago, I drove out to Standing Rock and participated in helping out there. So I think of, as I said, a lot of my activism has been really hands-on of doing the things, going to the soup kitchen or going to the food pantry and helping sort or volunteering for organizations that I feel like are making a difference.
So what community volunteerism do you have you done?
Well, I worked with Pioneer Valley Local First when I was living in Massachusetts. I was on their board of directors for three years and as the vice president during that time. Specifically at that point, it was looking at how to bring a more local living economy to the community. I've worked with other groups related to sustainability. Again, a lot of this was up in Pioneer Valley. While I was working on my masters, that all kind of clicked into place. So that would be he'd sustain, I mean, I'd sustain building network, et cetera.
What is your understanding of this job?
So my understanding of the position is that the legislators, they make the laws, they make adjustments to laws that currently exist, they manage and make adjustments to the budget. That's, that's it. You're showing up to do things for the county, but also to represent your area, in this case, and then Rhinebeck.
Have you done any research into the job, and if so, what?
So I spoke with a number of people that I know in this area who've known Joel for a while to get a sense of what they felt he was doing in his position. I'll be honest with you, there's a lot of confusion around what the legislators actually do or are able to do. That's the one thing I found. So my next step is actually to speak with a few of the Democrats that are currently serving in order to find out a little bit more in detail. But, I mean, it kind of ticks down those boxes. Make laws, make adjustments to laws that exist, make sure the budget doesn't go over. Be on committees, serve on committees as needed. And it looks like the committees that he was on are ones that are stronger suits for him. Most specifically, I think the Environmental Committee.
And how do you feel about running for election for this position if appointed?
I think that if you want me to stay, then I'll be here, which means running for election.
So you're committed to running for election? And why do you want this position?
Well, I feel like we're in a really, our world's changing. We know it's changing, it's changing rapidly. And to be in a position like this, to me, means that I'm coming to serve my area in a way that the laws that are made are forward thinking and really take care of the community of people that are here. I think it's an awesome opportunity to have another woman represented. I think that women are underrepresented.
Yes, we are.
I think that people who are on the younger side are also underrepresented. And, you know, something in my heart said, this is, this is the time, this is, it's a way. This is not the job I ever thought that I'd be holding, but at the same time, isn't that what politicians are meant to be? They're meant to be the people who have experience in the communities. They live their values and they come and they serve for a period of time to try to help make things better. And then they go back to their lives. So I really resonated earlier with what Trustee Ross was saying about like the farmer legislator, you know? Like, I think of myself in that similar vein where, yes, I would be a legislator, but I would still be me. You know, I would still be doing the things for the community in every way that I could imagine.
So I know you were raised in Clinton. What would you do for Rhinebeck and Clinton?
I think that's a great question. You know, to me, the question is what do you want to see done? What do we truly have an understanding of what this, this position can do? And I don't think that from, from the people I've spoken with so far, that that's clear. So I think the first thing would be to get very clear about what can actually be done, what power the position actually holds to make a change. And then to be open and honest with the town supervisors about that, the town boards about that. And to say, okay, here's, here's what I'm able to do. What do you need that falls, that falls under that? So clarity on the role, ongoing conversations with both towns. And, you know, I, you apologized for having the camera on. I don't mind the public nature of this. I don't mind the public nature of any of it, because I really feel like this is a role that's public and transparency is pretty important to me. So the transparency of let's sit down and talk about what's going on and what we need. I can say, well, I'm going to do this and I'm going to do that, but in reality, I'm not here representing me, I'm here representing you. So that's, that's really important to me.
I think that's my list of questions. Chauncey, Ed, Alan, go ahead.
What does it make you an effective legislator? What is there about you that would make you better than say, the other candidates?
I think that there are two pieces that come up for me. One being the organizations that I work with have a tendency to have things start moving again if they've been stuck. I'm very good at being a systems thinker and analyzing all of the little pieces and saying, oh, wait, this one doesn't belong there and that's actually causing the issues that we're seeing. Let's address that. So doing kind of an upstream evaluation of everything that's going on. The other being that I don't really see there being sides. I come to my conversations as having a conversation with another human being. That human being has loves and cares and hopes and dreams and things that they fear and things that they need. And therefore, when I'm, when I'm coming into conversation, when I'm coming into a conflict situation, able to typically really resolve that and really get down to the heart of what's trying to happen. So I think that I'm, I'm different simply.
Okay, so if appointed, what would you like to accomplish?
Thank you. If I pointed, I would like, as I said, to bring a little bit more transparency and clarity to what is actually even possible for this. I'd like to be able to take a closer look at all of the laws and policies that come up and really be able to address them as it relates to a whole systems view and not just, are we going to spend this money on this thing? Or is that thing really necessary? You know, can we take a deeper look at what's happening?
Ray or Nancy or?
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna ask you the typical question since I know you work in Clinton.
Yeah. I know, but I was that big.
But the thing I think you might want to address is, what kind of activities did you do until you left the Clinton area when you were off in college and all of that? So that's different than what did you do in the community? Any activities or committees, whatever, I don't know.
Okay. I'm gonna take a shot at answering that and then let me know if I missed any part of what we were trying to hit on. So are you asking just over the course of my life what I've been involved in in Clinton?
In Clinton.
Oh, in Clinton?
Yeah, yeah, just, you know, how you're involved. And who came out of Clinton much? I mean, it's a youth experience.
No, yeah, I'm thinking, I think I've been soccer, but I've been soccer at the Baptist, at the Baptist home.
Maybe 4H class.
Yeah, mhm, thank you.
Something like that, I don't know.
Mhm, yeah, I was in the 4H horse club. I was in the Southland's Pony Club and the Melver Pony Club, Clinton, you know, now. I went to the Clinton Alliance Church, now I go to the Church of Messiah because that's a little bit closer. Let's see, I was in soccer, I was not writing. Clinton, I think, you know, it's interesting because it's been carved up into so many pieces and that's actually really something that I'd like to see changed because. Because I was in the Hyde Park schools. Then my friend a mile down the road was in the Redback schools. And then my friend a couple miles down the other way was in the Melville school. And you just, the cohesiveness. And so I think I was very involved in a lot of different sports in those areas. I went to the Melville School, private school for high school, and played sports there as well. Soccer, lacrosse, squash, things like that. I did a lot of international travel. Water testing in Brazil as a young woman and traveled all over Europe. I was in Haiti after the earthquake. That was much more recent, obviously. And went to Sri Lanka to teach English. And I've been down to Kenya as well to teach English and work on sustainability issues. So, yeah, so I've been really involved in a lot of different ways around the world. And I think at home, in the typical ways, you know, that a child would be or that a young woman would be in the day-to-day running, you know.
I didn't expect you'd say you were a mayor or anything like that. You may have been young enough at eighteen, but you wouldn't have been.
No, but I am very familiar.
Just showing people you have a broader breadth than just saying, I went there till I was 12th grade and then gone.
Right. Thank you. Yeah, I think just to add to that, there's, my family had a home in Clinton, in the Redback Road for about 33 years. They just sold that. But I came back to the area because this has always been home. You know, no matter where else I've been, Clinton was home. And the reality when you live in Clinton is that if you need something, you come to Redback. So I've kind of always considered Redback my hometown, but then the rural area of Clinton to be where I lived. So I am very familiar with both of those and appreciate you asking that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm just wondering what you feel your challenges are going to be having not been involved in the political arena and taking on a considerably complex job as a legislator?
Thank you. So I think the challenges will be just to get to up to speed on the things that are happening. Specifically which, you know, because it's going to be thrown right in. Whoever steps into this position is going to probably have to start voting pretty immediately. It's not like you can say, hold on, I need another month or so to learn what I do. You're just, you're going to have to do it. And so I imagine that the challenge would be to just sit down and do it. You know, really spend the time and do the research and take the time to make sure that I have adequate information in order to make decisions. And I imagine that I'm going to be doing this with the support of the other legislators and with the support of the town supervisors of understanding what exactly is important and the board's view of where we need to go as a community and as a county. So, yeah, it's going to be challenging. It's going to be different. But, I mean, it kind of sounds like fun. Why not? It's not something, I haven't been colored by the past. I don't have 20, 30, 40 years of, well, this is just how it's done. So, you know, maybe in that way, I'll be able to follow upon some really happy mistakes of finding ways to get things done.
And that's a good thing. I guess, having, I've been in business my, my life. And then I started getting involved in politics in the town of Clinton. Such a different world. And there are so many regulations and rules and protocols and so on and so forth that even at a level that I'm at are very difficult to make that transition. So I was just trying to figure out how you might realistically make that transition from, obviously, a successful business background to that of a legislator.
Thank you, I appreciate that question. I think it is important to consider it. And at the same time, as I said, I really do believe that if appointed, I'm going to have the support of people who are wanting to see me succeed and wanting to really help, help to make that happen.
You heard something else?
No, I was just trying to break it up. So one of the major things that a legislator does is they're involved in taxes, writing laws and budgets. So can you expand upon what makes you feel that you have experience? If you have experience, tell us about it. Or if you don't have experience, what makes you feel like you can handle it?
Thank you. So as far as levying taxes or writing budgets, because I enjoy numbers, I think they're fun. One of the first things that I've been doing coming into the chamber is taking a look at, you know, where are we spending our money? How are we spending our money? And are there better or different ways to do that? I think that this county in particular has leaned a little too heavily on taxes. I mean, eight and a quarter is really high. I don't think we need any more than that. You know, like there has to be some kind of give point where we can have income that doesn't put a burden, an unnecessary burden on the people who live here. Or we're going to start seeing people growing old in place and then leaving and not being able to afford to have young families come in. It's a huge concern, you know? Are we going to watch our county die? So I think that, you know, when we talk about how to make a budget or how to manage that money or how to do things like this, we're really also talking about, can you look at numbers and make sure they're coming from the right place? You know, am I going to be wasting my time saying, can we add another $54 here or take another $20 away there? Probably not. But, yeah, maybe I'll have to vote on something like that. But I've been working with individual businesses as well as my own for, as I said, nearly 11 years now. And it's something that I do. We sit down, we look at the budget, we go over things, we go over where the money's coming in, we go over where it's not coming from, and we fix it. It's, the numbers aren't something that scare me. They're not something that I think I can handle.
Kirsten, could you talk a little bit about your duties at the Chamber of Commerce? And the reason that I ask is, I have the impression that that kind of job is pretty demanding. And ergo, do you really feel you have time to also serve in the legislature?
Thank you. So the job, as it is at the moment, is half-time to three-quarters time. It's not a full-time job. It could be a full-time job for two people. And part of what I'm doing there is finding a way to make that happen without putting, as I said, about the legislature not putting a burden on taxpayers as much and finding other ways of making sure it works, is finding ways that I'm not just going back to business and saying, can we spend more? Can we spend more? Can we spend more? We just need you to give us another 500 a year. And really looking at how that money can come from the people who love Redback and actually the whole area because the Redback area chamber covers Clinton, Tivoli. We have a number of members in Hyde Park, a number of members in Redback. So as far as physical time is concerned, I have the time to do it. As far as is it demanding? Absolutely, it's demanding. You know, I work with the board. Unfortunately, they're very helpful on things. But, you know, we work on the budget. We work on bringing in members. We're working on marketing. So on any given day, I'll have a phone call from a tourist who wants to bring their autistic child to Redback and wants to know where to bring them. Or I will have a conversation with someone who wants to plan a wedding here and would like some recommendations or information. Or I'm talking to a new potential member to see if they're interested in coming on board. Or I'm looking at our budget to say, you know, where are the areas for expansion?
Excuse me, do you have a position on jail?
No, I don't think it's a broken record. I think it's important to ask. So my masters is in sustainable communities and socially responsible business. And while I described my activism as being mostly lived, I do have a very strong bent towards social justice. And anything that we are doing as a community that causes people to be treated unfairly is something that I do not support. When you look at a jail, it's become a big business where a lot of money gets dumped. A lot of money gets dumped there when social services or other areas of the community really could benefit from that support and potentially keep those people out of jail in the first place. So as far as building a brand, new jail is concerned, I'm not supportive of it. That being said, I am supportive of any jail that exists being in good repair and being able to provide a more humane experience for the people who live there.
One of the things I liked about Joel was we always knew what was going on around the county. He was very prolific with emails. He was here at the Redback Town Board meetings. So I do see himself doing that and being a source of information about what's going on in the county for the residents of the two towns.
Absolutely. As I was saying earlier, I really feel that transparency is important. And being able to communicate and share information on a regular basis with the people who live here and the people who are making local decisions is important.
Anybody else? Chauncey, Ed, Nancy?
What is the Institute?
Do you mind?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just so we can, just so we can...
Yeah. Do you have a line here on your resume about the Institute for Social Innovation?
Yeah, Starting Clock Institute for Social Innovation. While I was working on my masters, I applied for their fellowship. The group is called Starting Clock. It's an institute for social innovation which gathered people from the ages of 18 up until mid-40s. But people who are identified as being leaders in sustainability, social innovation, on all spectrums, SOCA meetings, people who are engaged in technology, people who are engaged in education, and brought them all together in order to provide training and further education so that they could then go on and take leadership roles around the world.
And you're still with those folks?
So the fellowship and the training itself is something that, I think it's 2008 or 2009? I don't remember. What does it say? Yeah. So that is something that the training itself occurred at that point. From, once I became a fellow, there's ongoing opportunities for us to connect. There've been several online groups where we all engage with each other on whatever issues we're working on to get feedback on potential problems or make offers to help people find jobs to really help them connect with whoever they need to be successful. I volunteered at three institutes after I was a fellow to just help run them, help make them work. And, you know, to this day, just continue to be engaged with that. So, yeah, it's an ongoing option.
Anybody else?
Got me, I'm ready to say it.
One of the things that's important in your life is knocking on doors. Could you describe what experience you have in doing that? Not necessarily named candidates. Or if you haven't been there, could you just describe something in your experience that would suggest that you'd be good at doing that?
Thank you. I haven't knocked on doors for candidates. I have called people for my high school and my college raising money. I guess I did go door to door for a number of years. Girl Scout cookies. I never really thought about that as being, you know, something that would come up in the story of an interview. But, yeah, lots of years of selling Girl Scout cookies. And in general, meeting new people doesn't faze me. I think that one of the things that is, I've been described as being fearlessly social. People go, oh, that's a networking event. I'm like, ooh, do I get to go with that one? You know, I don't really feel that, you know, meeting new people is not something that scares me. And I think that the number of people who don't leave their homes as easily nowadays that it's good to not just expect people to come to public meetings, but also to provide opportunities through video and/or in-person by going to them to make sure that everyone gets a chance to participate.
Anybody else? Here, thank you. And thanks for coming and thanks for throwing your hat in the ring. We appreciate it.
Of course, thank you so much for having me. Thank you all for being here.
Do we want, can we take another five-minute break? Is that all right? Would you like to make a motion for a five-minute break? Yeah, thanks. We'll be back in five minutes. We're going to come back in here, everybody. Settle down. Thanks for your patience. We had to schedule this quickly. We only have 20 calendar days from the reservation to make an appointment. And I didn't want to back this up to the last day in case we had a weather event. And scheduling everybody, especially people who work, our last candidate teaches at Marist. So we did the best we could. Thank you all for your participation. Our next candidate is Brennan Carney.
I bring notes, even though no one else does.
Hi.
Just in case.
Again, the same questions that I'm asking. What is your political affiliation?
Life fond Democrat. Raised by Democrats.
And you're aware that in the legislature there are caucuses? With whom are you caucus?
The Democrats.
This is an appointed position and this person would serve through the end of the year or January 1st of 2020 when the next legislator elected would take the position. Do you plan on, if appointed, running for election?
And to run to win.
Okay. What do you do for a living?
So I am currently working for a local design build firm as a project manager, which means I oversee renovation of projects, houses mostly. In fact, I'm working in Clinton on Sunset Trail for the last several months. Before that, I had my own renovation and contracting business for many years. And it's my passion. I mean, I have almost 20 years in it at this point.
You're a building contractor?
I am a building contractor. Was a licensed New York City contractor at one time. I've been in Redback 10 years.
Tell us about your government experience.
Sure. I'm relatively new to the government scene. I was appointed to the board last fall to fill a seat that was vacated for me when I was chosen in the caucus to run. Joe Gil, before me, kindly felt Joe Gill before me kindly felt that it would be a nice opportunity for me to participate in the budget process. So he resigned so that I could participate with this board in the development of that budget. So that was my first budget process. This is my second. I have not held a political position before then. And I actually, well, you're gonna ask me this later. I had not planned to run for county legislator, but I feel called to do that. And maybe I can address it a little bit when you ask me some other questions about my understanding of the job.
What is your understanding of the job?
Okay.
You just went with her.
I'm waiting for it.
Open that door.
Well, so I, like a bunch of the other candidates, you know, have been online and watched things and read the minutes. I also had really interesting conversations with Hannah Black, the minority leader in the legislature from Hyde Park, and with Chris Munn, I think it's the deputy minority leader, whatever you call that, from Red Hook. Because I wanted to understand better the job and make sure that I could do a good job. Because Joel, love him, hate him, you know, it was unclear, I think, to many of us on the board here, I can only speak for myself, about how he could actually be helpful to us. You know, we got a lot of reports and I agree, Alan, with your sentiment that it was nice getting an overview of things. And I admired Joel's activism. And didn't always agree with him about everything, but some things I did. I didn't like the monster power lines in Clinton, that was for sure. But again, I came into this saying, yes, I think I'd be interested in doing this, but what exactly would I be doing? And my understanding in speaking with Hannah and Chris is a little bit different than the answers you heard before. What they really emphasized to me wasn't the oversight and it wasn't the budgets. It was about being a community liaison and then a community advocate at the legislative level. So what they explained to me is that they take a lot of phone calls from concerned citizens, people with questions about services they need, people advocating for things that they'd like to see happen. And then that they feel that their job is frequently to take it up at the county level and start asking, you know, commissioners and things, how would I address that? What's the answer for my constituent? So of course, there are the financial aspects and the budgets. But being an advocate and a liaison and a communicator is something I'm really good at. It's a big part of what my job's been for twenty years. Running a construction crew, running a small business, and now working again as a project manager is about managing problems. And that's been some of my work on the town board as well. So it would bring me great satisfaction to be able to hear from community members in Clinton and write back about what they need, and the boards. Because I would like to be a better resource to my board and to the Clinton board, because I think that we have been without that sort of service from our legislator. And again, I think we were getting a lot of other things. But I think that could be improved on, and that's something I'd like to see happen.
Can you give us an example of what sort of, what could you do from Rhinebeck or Clinton?
Sure. Well, so I spoke with Mike Whitten, the one board member who's not here, from your board. And the main thing he mentioned to me is he's concerned about the potential loss of state AIN funding, which I realize is not a county issue, and of course, it's one we're facing here too. But, you know, he mentioned how, you know, Clinton is a smaller community, it's got a smaller budget, and how he was worried about that. And he wondered whether there were things that could be done on the county level to, I don't know, make up the shortfall or address that in some way. I don't know the answer to that yet. But that's certainly the sort of thing I would want to hear and help resolve. In Rhinebeck, well, we all know Mill Road needs to be addressed. And we've been trying, Alan is gonna smile real big at that. And we've hit sort of another roadblock from the county. And I think that's the sort of thing that the county legislator should be taking up for our community. You know, we've all got slate quarrying, you know, running through both of our communities. I used to live on Center Road for almost two years, right across from Camp Rising Sun. I love Clinton. And slate quarry's always been scary. And we continue to improve on what we're doing there. So I want to follow up to make sure that those are gonna be the effective sort of things we can do. And then, yes, I, like other candidates, I need a lot more information from Clinton than I have right now. But I definitely recognize that we're vastly different communities with different needs. But I think we're two pretty exciting kind of communities. And Clinton does have this soft spot in my heart to spend some happy time out there. Rhinebeck School District in Clinton.
Why do you want this job?
Because I'm good with people and I believe that the last several years in government have really caused a lot of us to step up and serve who hadn't thought of ourselves that way before. David, I'll answer your question before you ask it. No, I haven't worked really on campaigns before. I mean, I've done a little bit of leaflet handing out and I've done some phone calling and stuff, but I hadn't gotten very involved in that way. And I think you're asking that question and making that point is a good one. So I've been trying to remedy that for the past year and a half, and I would be happy to take it to the next level. And again, going back to the campaign issue, I mean, yeah, whoever steps up to do this is gonna need to be ready for a campaign, and possibly a hard campaign to continue serving our communities almost forever. I'm ready for that.
Right. Oh, sorry, I skipped your question.
Go ahead.
No, you're welcome.
Ray Ogle, surprise of town Clinton. Since you briefly lived in town, what issue did you see that the town of Clinton may have that are different than the Rhinebeck area which I think you currently live in?
Sure. Yes, I live right next door. You can see my house out the window. I, well, you are a very rural community. And that's part of what makes you so beautiful and attractive, I think, to both long-term residents and new residents. And you have a lot of new people coming in. I'm renovating a house right now for a person from the city. So I'm sure that there are things that will come up in terms of how you balance that kind of growth. I also watched with great interest the power lines issue, which was, you know, disturbing to me because, of course, it would have, you know, really changed the character of your community. Those are the ones, again, that come to mind for me, having been there. Are there any others that you'd like to specifically ask me about?
No, I just was...
Yeah, no, you're testing our knowledge, I know.
Your impression. Did you look at any of our town board meetings on Monday or stuff like that?
Yes, I did. And in fact, there was something on there.
Did I look well?
Yes, you looked fine. Oh, no, you know what it is? What I took notes on were some of the things coming up actually at the legislative level, not particular to Rhinebeck or Clinton.
Oh, okay.
But, yeah, so that, sorry, that's what I have my notes on.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chelsea?
Well, question, Brennan, similar to the one I asked Kirsten Bonanza. Do you have time for this, given your work in the construction world? I know you'd be relieved of the time you spent here, and I don't want to balance these...
No, just kidding.
Do you have time for it?
I do. One of the really lucky things about this job I took is I'm working for a company owned by an old college friend of mine. And I lucked into my dream job where they said, "How much time can you give us and what would you like to do?" And so I get to be back in the field, but I don't work regular office hours. I average, depending how many projects I have, from like six to twelve hours a week. Everyone's small, if it's twenty or twenty-two on a really, really busy week. But no, so I do have the time. And in fact, and actually, and I spoke with him about this at work, when I told him that this was a possibility for me and something I wanted to pursue, that would be what I'd be more interested in cutting back on in order to be able to fulfill the position if it does become a conflict. Again, I don't see it that way. But if something had to give, I'd rather be serving in the public sector.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just wondered, what do you feel would make you an effective legislator? Is there something that you may have that the candidates don't have that would make you more effective?
Well, I don't know if they don't have it, but you all know me. And I am... I can be a big personality in my social group, I'm a big personality in my friend group with my colleagues. But here on the board, I think I've been a level, quiet presence. And I think that's a really important quality, especially for someone coming in new to the legislature. And I talked with Hannah and Chris about that. I said, you know, "What do you all need? What would be helpful, since I'd be caucusing with you?" And I said, "Would you be available for guidance?" Because I like to check on things and carefully plan before I leap. You know, I'm not planning to go up and sort of mouth off at meetings, that's not my way. You wouldn't see me doing that on any other thing for the past year, I don't think. And so that kind of patience and self-control, I think, is good. I'm also, I'm a really good communicator. One of the things that I'm really proud of, living in a small town like Rhinebeck, is that I have friends on both sides of the aisle, even in our difficult political climate that we've all been in for years now. I have all sorts of people who I spend time with, who I talk to, who I listen to, who listen to me. And so I'd like to think that that would make me a good legislator in terms of being able, again, to hear what everyone is asking for here. And I don't think that we've had that for a long time. I mean, I think we've had somebody who was doing a lot of stuff, there was a lot going on. But I'm not sure it was all what everybody wanted to be going on. I'm not sure anyone even asked. And I wanna ask. And so I do plan to meet with the boards, you know, come into meetings, give reports, not just about activism, but about, you know, concrete things that are going on. I think that's a strength I could bring.
Alan?
Jail?
Not so keen on the big jail. And, yeah, I'm a big fan of, you know, criminal justice reform, even if that's not necessarily at the county level. I will say one other thing, though, about the jail. The legislature was asked to approve some time ago a new building in downtown Poughkeepsie. And I think they were asked to approve a construction budget of about $1.7 million for the renovation of this building. That didn't include the purchase price, which was like six-something. And they recently have been told that it's over budget and it's, they've spent, I believe, forgive me if I'm giving you the wrong quote, about $900,000 on asbestos abatement. Now, anybody in the construction business can tell you that if you were looking at an old building in Poughkeepsie, you needed to have looked at the asbestos word one. And then abatement is one of the most expensive line items in a project. I've done a lot of, not myself, I've hired a lot of abaters in Brooklyn, not so much here. And so they are way over budget and now they're having to come back to the legislature and ask for like four, $5.4 million, I think it is. No, excuse me, $4.6, I wanted to give this to you correctly. That's the sort of thing that I can bring an eagle eye to. I know construction budgets. I'm really good with them. That's been my job for an awfully long time. So in terms of fiscal accountability, and, you know, I'm talking a lot here about communication and the need to listen to the community, but in terms of fiscal accountability, that's a skill that I can directly contribute in the legislature because I think that that's something that could be improved upon. Surely, we could do better than $1.7 to $4.6, and $4.6 isn't even a finished figure. You know, so that's, sorry, you weren't asking me about that, but you reminded me, speaking of new buildings, that that's something I'd very much like to be involved with.
Dean, or Elliot, or Nancy, or any questions or comments? Anybody from the public?
I wanna follow up.
Oh, really? I thought I had you.
Kind of new question.
Very interesting question.
Oh, no.
Why don't we quickly get into destruction?
No, you go ahead.
So since you've been elected or started serving, have you worked on other campaigns where you've reached out to the broader area outside of Rhinebeck?
No. I have focused solely on my duties here, absolutely. But I do see, I've been thinking an awful lot about that election that I would have to run next year to make sure that I was really ready to do something. And I think that one of the things that occurs in those kind of elections is that you are advocating for other people. That's not, I don't know how far outside of our area you're talking, but I think that's something I'd have to change and do more of.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Anybody else? Thank you for coming.
You are very welcome. I'm gonna stay for the last one so that I can listen.
We have a half an hour until the next interview. I tried to schedule it best I could, the last interview is working. So I would, you know, I have a couple of issues to bring up about Rhinebeck. We have a meeting scheduled here. I just wanted to let everybody know that Michelle Turek, our new and excellent zoning administrator, has finally been approved by county personnel. Michelle has a bachelor's degree in urban studies from Vassar and a master's degree in public policy from Marist. And we hit a little bump with getting her approved. So working on county civil service personnel is something I'd really like to have us address in the upcoming year. I think the job title had not been updated since 1978, so maybe they weren't aware that urban studies was essentially planning. But we're thrilled. The other thing I wanna let everybody know is that our highway department secretary has resigned. The wonderful and fabulous and very efficient Leslie Hill has left us to take a full-time job. So since about 2013, we have gone through one, two, three, four, five, six. Leslie will be our seventh secretary in the highway department. All people leaving for full-time benefited jobs. When we lose somebody, it is a great blow to our operations and our productivity. And it takes about six months of on-the-job training to get somebody up to speed. The secretary in the highway department is a liaison to bookkeeping and personnel. They handle all the time cards and billing, they handle the fuel billing costs from our shared gas tanks, which we serve all the police departments and fire departments and the school. And it really sets us back. So here, we've been committed to creating full-time benefited jobs. And this is something I wanna look at to see if we can yet again consolidate two jobs into one full-time benefited job. It's something we need to think about and look at as we're moving through government. Anybody else have any updates or things to talk about? Should we have another recess while we wait for our last candidate? And again, thank you all for coming. I'd like to motion for a short recess. Thank you. We'll be back. Hi, everybody. We're gonna come back into session. Our last candidate is here, so if we all settle down, we'll give her a moment to get her phone off. Again, this is a special town board meeting of the town of Rhinebeck Town Board. It's February first. We've convened the meeting in order to interview the five candidates who have put themselves forward to be considered for appointment by the town of Rhinebeck and the town of Clinton Town Boards. We are conducting all of our meetings in public, with publicly noticed meetings, with full public participation. We will be voting on this in a joint town board meeting with Clinton and Rhinebeck on Wednesday, the sixth, at 6:00 PM, here in the Rhinebeck Town Hall. These interviews will be edited over the weekend and they will be on Panda YouTube, I believe, by Sunday or Monday morning. And again, I wanna thank all the candidates for, it's our feeling that we are replacing someone to an elected office, so there should be no expectation of privacy. The case law is working on this. Robert Freeman has given an opinion. So we're conducting all these interviews publicly. So our last interview is with Evelyn Gordon. Evelyn, would you please introduce yourself and come up and sit down?
Yeah, this is Michael.
You can position yourself however you feel. Yeah, with the microphone. Hi, thank you. I realize you changed your teaching schedule around to meet with us and we appreciate that. We don't have a lot of time to conduct these interviews. We have twenty days. We have 20 days from the resignation day. And we didn't want to back it up to the end in case there was another weather event. We want to make sure that we're able to appoint somebody. So thank you for coming. Evelyn, I'm asking a series of questions to each candidate. And then I open the floor up to the town board and the members of the Clinton Town Board, who are still here, and the members of the public. But since we're sort of acting as the voters' eyes and ears, would you please tell us what is your party affiliation?
A Democrat.
Have you been a Democrat for a long time?
Lifelong.
A lifelong Democrat. You're aware that in county legislature, there are caucuses. There's a Republican caucus and a Democratic caucus. With whom would you caucus?
Certainly the Democratic caucus.
Okay. What do you do for a living?
Primarily, I teach. I'm at Marist College right now. I have a small business, too, actually, that I continue to run, but they're quite dormant.
What do you teach?
I teach communication strategy to advertising and marketing.
And your businesses are local?
My businesses are local. My main business, but again, it's quite dormant, is advertising and marketing consultant as a strategist. And I also have a home design business.
You're aware that we're naming a replacement for District 11 of the county legislature. And whoever is appointed will have to stand for election in the upcoming November auction. Are you committed to running for election?
Oh, yes.
And are you committed to serving in this position for a term or two?
Yes.
Great. Can you tell us about any government experience? And if you don't have government experience, can you tell us about any political or community volunteer experience that you have?
My government experience is as a volunteer before moving to Rhinebeck, gosh, July. I was a resident in the town of Mylan. I very quickly got myself involved with local government there. That would have been in the year 2004, I believe. And served on a couple of committees. I was the chairperson of what was then the Communications Committee. And we got a quarterly newsletter called In Mylan. I was a rescue squad volunteer, New York certified EMT, and served in that capacity until a few years ago. And my concentration with government was always in the background. You know, even as editor-in-chief of the newsletter, it's not much more than your name on a masthead. So I was a behind-the-scenes kind of person, I suppose you could say. As rescue squad, quite the opposite. You're pretty front and center when you're out at 2:00 in the morning trying to pull someone off a road who has perhaps driven a little too quickly in a snowstorm.
Thank you. What is your understanding of this job?
Of the job? Well, since it is, since it is the legislature, I assume it is about legislating. It is a body of governing at the county level. The district, of course, is Rhinebeck Clinton, which is District 11. From what I can gather from the website, many of the efforts of the county legislature have been toward what are high-profile kinds of areas these days. Opioid addiction and domestic violence. The Me Too movement seems to have affected what they're doing these days. What else did I say? A lot of focus on agriculture and farming in the area. And to my eyes, there do seem to be a number of new farms in the area, which makes me smile. I'm seeing that as their key focus right now.
And what would you want to achieve or accomplish for the towns of Rhinebeck and Clinton?
Well, I'm a newbie in Rhinebeck, but I'm not new to the area. Of course, Mylan is right next door.
How long did you live in Mylan?
Fifteen years, fifteen years in Mylan. And for it now, just a few months here. And before that, I was in Columbe County. I was in the town of Gant. What I'm seeing in Rhinebeck is an interesting dynamic. I was a gallery owner and shopkeeper in the village for four years. And what I saw was a real split between people who love and nurture the community and people who kind of take it for granted and ignore it. I'm a big believer in supporting local businesses. And I was before I opened my gallery, and I certainly am now. I always try to indeed shop local before I'll go on the internet, which has devastated so many businesses these days. So I would like to see some of that business sense, local business sense restored to Rhinebeck, to the village, of course, primarily, and to the town. I guess at the risk of touching a sacred cow, I would like to see a better examination of school taxes and the sense of how school taxes are, how they are determined. There seems to be, you know, the sense of accountability for how those dollars are spent. I would like to see a little bit more diligence.
Well, so you know, that's not within our purview or the county legislature purview. That is the school district. And the state decides how properties are taxed for. The biggest property burden is school taxes.
Yes, it is. Of course it is. Of course it is. I think I read recently.
Seventy percent of our taxes.
How much? I'm sorry.
Sixty-five to seventy percent of taxes.
In Mylan, it was more like 80 or 85 percent of the taxes in Mylan. But the infrastructure in Mylan was very different, of course. At the county level, I mean, there seems to be some conversation between county and state and county and municipality. It is a kind of a conduit, I think, for both of those communications. I could see channeling up and channeling down in both ways there. And I would like to think that, you know, I'd like to think of a good communicator and that I would be helpful in trying to engage some of those conversations in a work-obvious way.
Thank you. Why do you want this position? What made you put your head in the ring?
Well, as I said, I've been politically involved, not just since I've been a resident locally, but my whole life. And I was very, very active politically in my earlier life. And I think all of the commotion going on at the national level, you'd pretty much have to be living in a cave these days to not know what's going on. And I feel very strongly that we have to get back to doing what government is supposed to do, rather than just having these stalemates and arguments and ugliness. There's so much ugliness. And I would like to restore some civility to the process. I'd like for some true governing to go on, whether it be policies that I agree with or don't agree with. I would relish an opportunity to have those conversations.
I think we take pride on doing that in the local level. And certainly, we're used to working across the aisle on the town level and supporting each other, no matter what our political affiliation is. Chauncey and Alan?
Yeah, I do have a question. I'm confused about something. Your letter, which has the six or seven bullet.
I need to excuse myself for one minute. Please carry on. Please carry on.
Oh, okay. There's six or seven bullet items. And in one of them, you say you've been politically involved and active during your entire tenure in the area. And then you just said a moment ago that you've been politically active. Then in the next bullet item, I see reference to the several volunteer activities. Are you considering those volunteer activities to be your political involvement and your political activism? Or other things?
No, no, no. I should back up a bit. Since I moved to the town, I was involved with the local Democratic core strategy group and was involved in many of those campaigns.
I see.
So, you know, I was, I did whatever needed doing, basically, as part of the core. But I was quite involved with a lot of the local campaigns in Mylan.
I see. All right. I ask because that doesn't come through.
Yes, here.
Okay, thank you. Where do you stand on the new jail?
Done a good deal of reading about it. I will reserve opinion until, if indeed, I get to see more. I'm a big believer in practicality.
What would you like to accomplish if you were appointed?
Well, I think I said some of it. I would like to see some better communication through the county, both upwards to the state and from the state downward to the, you know, to the town of Rhinebeck. I think so much communication is missing, so much. It seems to me that the county, in terms of legislature and laws, is less impactful, if you will, than any of the municipalities or at the state level. So I wouldn't like to see an attempt to wrest power away in any direction. But I would like to see a better sense of being able to represent. This is what these towns need. And if there is ignorance about that, please let me disabuse you of ignorance. So I would see myself sitting into town board meetings here and in Clinton and seeing what the issues were and hopefully having some effect on those at a county level.
Thank you. I want to apologize for running out. It was a union rep and I wanted to make sure that I addressed what needed to be addressed. Does anybody else from the board have a question? Alan?
I already asked one.
Ray?
I'm Ray Oberly, supervising town of Clinton. I've been for many years. My question is, and I've asked all the others the same thing. We have two different kinds of communities. But Clinton is more rural, just like Mylan is. While Rhinebeck, again, has a big mass of people in one section. It is a rural area, it's true. But each one has a different complexity of operation. Have you any ideas or have you studied or any clues as to what Clinton is alike?
Well, the short answer is yes. When About Town was in print, I was often a contributing author. And many times, I was given charge to go to the different towns. It was kind of an enforced learning of all the surrounding towns. One of the most eye-opening bits was the Mid Hudson Library System and going from town to town to town. And that was relatively early in my time here. So I got a good eye-opener about what all the towns, much is very available, if that's what you want, in the library level. So talking to people in the Red Hook Library versus the Rhine Cliff Library versus Clinton, Stanfield, et cetera, et cetera, was a pretty good eye-opener, too, of what was going on in various towns. And that was several years ago now. I would be misrepresenting myself if I said that I kept my finger on the pulse of Clinton. But I'm also a very quick study. So I think that there may have been some time lapsed between what I knew then and what I might know now. But I do believe I could get up to speed relatively.
I was just more concerned that, you know, your thoughts would be more based on Rhinebeck environment versus the rural Clinton environment.
Do you remember, ex-Mylan?
I know, I know. Mylan is even more rural, so it's big and less handled.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Nancy or Elliot?
I just want, this is a good question here. Trying to handle all the jobs. Okay, so the two companies of which you were president, you sound normal.
They're dormant. They exist. They're still active. I send in a, I file a tax return every year. But for the last several years, they've said inactive.
Right. And the previous, the gallery, is that still going?
That operated under one of the entities? No, that closed in 2015.
So that's not, okay.
So teaching at Marist is most of my professional life.
Well, that, having done that, I can attest to that being a full-time job. Even though I'm not supposed to.
I've got it down to benefit them full-time.
I never got a handle on that.
When you're an adjunct, I teach one class, three sections of one class. So it is, I've learned to streamline a lot of it.
Yeah, I think I calculated one time when I was looking for about $4 a month. I'm a senior over.
I've done better than that, but in the beginning, it's pretty severe.
Anybody else? Any questions or comments or concerns from the public? David? He's tied for five.
They're all smiling. They're asking everybody.
Okay.
Almost all say it, you miss him.
Hi, I'm David White. I'm a member of the Rhinebeck Democratic Committee. And one of these I get involved with is door-to-door candidates. And in an election like this, that's a very important element to get elected, which is what the voters want. Have you done that? Could you describe to a great extent to which you've done that? And if not, what experiences you've had that might show that you would be good at doing that as a candidate?
I've actually done a great deal of that. When some of the elections were, you know, on the slate in Mylan for two or three different campaigns and electoral cycles, I did door-to-door with candidates. I also did a lot of door-to-door with petitioning when candidates were wanting to get on a ticket, one reason or another. I find it both energizing and a little bit scary, all at the same time. You just never know, some doggy's gonna come hip and at your heels when you haven't been, you know, you haven't had an appointment with someone. But yes, a great deal. I do really, really enjoy talking to people. If you're a communication strategist, the best thing you can get to know is what makes people tick. You know, the first rule of any communication is know your audience. So I really do enjoy the experience of really hearing people, understanding them, empathizing, hopefully, with what's going on with them.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anything else you want to say to us?
Well, other than I feel privileged to be here, thank you. I'm glad I caught the notice. And I very much look forward to doing a very good job. I don't know how to do things, except to do them really well. So I promise you, I would dive in and I would do the best job I knew how to do. You have a difficult decision to make, trying to be the voice of thousands of people. So I have every respect for however you get out.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Clinton Town Board and members of the public, thank you for coming. I want to remind everybody that we will be voting on this on Wednesday the 6th at 6:00 p.m. here in Rhinebeck Town Hall in a joint town of Rhinebeck and town of Clinton meeting. I'm not sure how the procedure will go because I haven't given it that much thought. But all of you, please think about it and we'll figure out the best way together. We are accepting applications until the close of business on Monday, which is the 4th. But I guess if someone wanted to petition us on Wednesday night, you know, I'm always open for listening. So everybody, thank you. This has been an interesting and rushed process. I want to thank all of the candidates for putting their names forward. I think we have an embarrassment of riches here. And I think we'd be well-served by all of you. So again, we look forward to continuing this process in open, in the public, and with public participation. Does anybody else want to say anything? Ray? Let's see, anybody on the town board? Hearing nothing, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. May I have a second? Who was that? Alan?
Second.
Oh, was that Bill? Bill, you gotta run for office. Thank you, Alan. All in favor? Aye, any opposed? So thank you, everybody. Good afternoon.
Nice try, Bert.
Thanks again, everybody.